Good morning, Commissioners. I, Bill, Priya, John, Friday, so we go by first names, this is casual. This is our work session. Four out of five of us are present. Karen was not going to be able to be here today. And so I think we are ready to go. This is a time when we talk amongst ourselves. We do not have an agenda and we do not have public comment. We're just here to chat and do the business of the state in an informal capacity. Commissioners, following the discussion or check-in on OGDPs and the fact that we've got some that are in the system and they're moving through, I invited Jane, our permitting manager, to be with us this morning to give us a quick update on how to find things within the system. So Jane, if you're good, we'll start with you this morning.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning. Morning.
I was just, I'm going to share my screen and I hope you can keep track of my cursor as I click around and show you where some things are that that are available without logging into our e-form system or logging into the hearings filing system. So let me share my screen. So do you see our homepage, I hope?
Yes, we do. Thanks, Jane.
So this permits page right here is access to the pending applications. So right here it says pending Form 2As. There's all counties, you can search by county, but right now there's not a lot, so searching the whole state works. This, these are the Form 2Cs, which are the OGDP certification form. And then, of course, we do have the permits to drill that come after an OGDP has been approved. So I'll just start here with the Form 2As. Right now, this search only pulls up five, there are more than five in process. And I need to, we need to expand this, so this will be fixed by the end of today. But anyway, every Form 2A is listed. This says document number, that is the electronic form document number of the form itself. It shows that it's the public comment link. So we can go there real quickly. So if you click on that, it takes a while because it actually switches over to, well, it has this intermediate page where you could see if there were public comments, you'd be able to see them here. And since there aren't any, it just says there are currently no public comments for this location. If you wanted to see the PDF of this particular Form 2A, you can click there. Takes a minute, the Form 2A is a pretty big document now.
Jane, as we're waiting for that to load, can I ask a question? So the sheet that you went to showed five pending OGDPs, but you said-
Five pending Form 2As.
Or 2As, I'm sorry.
An OGDP could potentially have multiple 2As.
Right, and so you mentioned that there are more than five that are in the system, but the system doesn't show the others. Why is that? And you said it was going to be fixed by the end of the day, and how is that happening?
Okay, so what happened, you know, our transition from before January 15th, 2021 to after, we held on to the Form 2As that had been filed prior to January 15th, if you'll recall. And and we, so let me go back. So on this page, we had for a time, a section for only the forms, the applications that were submitted on or after January 15th, and we still had all the applications that were submitted prior. And we removed the section of the ones that were submitted prior because they've been removed from the system now, but we didn't update this. So it's a little bit convoluted and technical. It's just a glitch that, like I said, I can get it fixed by the end of the day. And I can update you when that happens.
Okay, thank you.
It was just a way of controlling old and new, and now everything's new, but the controls, the filters are still on, unfortunately.
Okay, thanks, Jane.
Okay, so now we'll get back. Oh, so I opened the PDF of that Form 2A, so here it is. You can see it has 19 pages. But it's available for when folks are opening this to go put in a public comment, they can pop open the 2A and read through that if they, if you want to. But you can click here and this takes you into the e-form system. You don't have to do anything, it just keeps going. It says it's loading right here, takes a little bit. And now you click here, and this is where a person can enter a comment. You have to click here to put in a comment. So that's what that interface is. Are there any questions before I jump out of that? Okay. So I'm just going to close out of that and go back here. So so here, this is, that's where we clicked there to go in to put in a public comment. This shows the deadline for public comment and has a little reminder that it closes at midnight of whatever that date is. And it shows that the comments are already closed on these two Form 2As. Here's the name of the pad, over here's the operator. This says documents link. So if you click on here, it opens a listing of, it includes the Form 2A itself, and all of these are attachments. And down here, it says one and two, you have to, it's, there are so many that you have to go to a second page to see all the attachments. And you can open any one by clicking download. And again, these are all PDFs. And so this is the flow line attachment. And of course, you can zoom in, do whatever you need to do here. Not sure why that's like that. So you can zoom in and navigate around to see this particular attachment. So anyway, so the, this is a complete list of everything that's part of this Form 2A. So you can open any number of these. All the, all the attachments. These are the plans that are required by these particular rules. And obviously, this is not very informative to just have the rule number. We're in the process of updating that so that what the name of these attachments will be, the name of the plan required by that particular rule plus the rule. So I apologize for this nomenclature. It's not very informative and we're going to change that.
Jane, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
If there are any updates to any of these attachments or forms, is the, are those updates reflected in this list of documents? So if like, they submitted something, okay. So if they submitted something on June 1st, that would be reflected here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, it'll be updated.
Super.
Yeah. So then, so here's the status of the Form 2A. It's going to be, the choices are in process or on hold. Because again, this, what we're looking at is a list of the pending applications. So they're in, they're being reviewed, they've passed completeness, they don't appear here until they pass completeness. So then they're either in process or they might be placed on hold. For an OGDP, there is a Form 2B, which is the cumulative impact data identification. This is your access to that form. And again, what you're going to see is a PDF of the form. So here it is, it's 11 pages long. So you can just go through this to read all of this data that's been provided in the cumulative impacts, Form 2B. And then here's the Form 2C. So this works the same way. You click on that document number, it'll open the PDF of the Form 2C. So the Form 2C at, upon passing completeness, the Form 2C is actually approved. And all the Form 2C is, it's a certification by the operator that all the parts of the, of their OGDP application have been submitted. So if you scroll down here, here's the document number of the Form 2A that's associated with it. Here's again, the document number of the Form 2B. And here is the docket number of the hearing application. So this form just puts everything together and keeps it together for tracking purposes and to get everything connected in the database. So the great thing about this is you can copy this docket number. And you can go to our homepage. And you can go to hearings and to the e-filing system and to the public access viewer, which of course you could have saved as a favorite up here if you want. And you can put the docket number in here. And you can see everything that's in the e-filing system for this OGDP. And somewhere in here, here's an amended application. I see there's multiple permitting reviews. Whenever you see multiple permitting reviews, you can suspect that there's going to be an amended application. It's still downloading these, it's a big document. And I might not have the fastest internet speed today. Wow. Let's take it as time. We can come back to that, it'll pop open. So anyway, the other thing that you can see here are the OGDPs that are the Form 2Cs that are in, oh, there's the hearing application. So here's the hearing application. All 163 pages of it for that OGDP. I'll just close that. So going back here, if you click on the Form 2C, so again, these Form 2As have passed completeness and are now in process. These Form 2Cs that are listed here are still in process, which means that the Form 2As for it, for these, have not passed completeness yet. Because if they had passed completeness, these 2Cs wouldn't be pending, they would be approved. So this just shows you what's essentially waiting to pass completeness. Again, the docket number is provided, which you can copy and paste and do just like I did. You can go to your e-filing system, you can pull up the Form 2B. And we don't provide on this page access to the Form 2As because again, they haven't passed completeness. And until they pass completeness, they're subject to being sent back to the operator being revised. So they aren't at the point of a technical review. But this shows you for each of these OGDPs, here's the names of them, how many related Form 2As there are. So this opens, so I'm going to open this one, you can see this says that there are four related Form 2As. So I'm going to open this pending OGDP certification. It's for Bonanza Creek, it's for the state antelope OGDP. And you'll see here that the number four in this case includes a Form 2A for either a new location or modifying this location. And then these three existing locations. And then, of course, here's the Form 2B, and here's the docket number. So again, the Form 2C has a lot of information on it for all the different parts for this OGDP. So these are approved locations, and you can look at these in our data system in COGS. So you can, oops, sorry, can copy this location ID. Can go to data facilities. You can paste that location ID number in here. Here it is, it's a Bonanza Creek pad. And here's the, what we call the scout card, it's the location information. It's a summary of the information for this particular location. And of course, here are all the documents that exist in that file. So the I'm going to go back to the pending permits, and I'm going to go back to the pending Form 2As. And here is the, the last link that's available. This is a link to the map. So each Form 2A has a latitude and longitude entered on it. And if you click on that, this will open our map and it'll go right, it's, the map is opened now and it's centered on that latitude and longitude. So you go over here to permits. And here's pending locations, meaning pending Form 2As. You turn this map layer on and it puts this symbol on, and you can see this is the extraction jet fuel location, and that's the Form 2A we're looking at. So then you, so you've already, it's taken you right to where this proposed location is. And you can turn on all the map layers you want to get a feel for where it is. So I've just turned on the photos, that's how I like to do it. This is the town of La Salle. Again, you can toggle on and off any map layers you want to do a review of where this is going to be. And it looks like it's in the middle of a crop, a field, so. I'll go back, so remember, that's how we got there. So again, it'll open a new map every time. It automatically centers the map area on the latitude and longitude. You turn on the pending locations. And for some reason, it didn't pop up, sorry. That's terrible. Not sure why that's not plotting, but I'll check into it. Here's another one, this is the PDC spinny. Now we've lost that layer. So that's everything you can access from this screen, from this search. Form 2s. I know these come after the OGDPs, but just, this just shows you all of the Form 2s that are currently in process. This has the same ability to look at all the documents. If you click here, it'll open all the attachments for that that are with this pending Form 2. This is the map link. So any questions? Mimi, I think this is what you wanted me to show everybody.
Indeed.
Jane, I've got a question. So if I'm a member of the public and I'm interested in providing comment on 2A.
Yeah.
Am I sure as a member of the public that I've got the most, the latest version of the application on this that I'm, that I'm commenting on? Because I know that even after it passes completion, there's still modifications that are happening to that application as it's going through technical review. So, and at least I thought last time we talked about this, there was some indication that that actual 2A application could be modified up until the point that we have a director's recommendation. So how does the public know that that's the most current version of that that they're commenting on?
So these documents are updated every, as staff works on them. So the, the public is going to see whatever is the current version through the public comment period. When the come up, public comment period ends, staff's technical review continues for however long it takes, like you said, until the director makes a recommendation. So-
And then they would have, they would have perhaps another opportunity then to comment when we begin, when we begin to review the process. And that would, that would be their additional opportunity to comment. So they could provide comments to this in before the director actually made their recommendation. But then they also have an opportunity to comment once the commission begins review of-
Absolutely, yep. Any other questions? Comments? So the things that need to be fixed is that this list needs to have all, however, I think there's, well, I won't say how many, however many OGDPs are currently past completeness, because it's cutting off some of it.
Great, thank you, Jane.
And what I just showed you is what the public sees. I'm using the public site, so. Okay?
Thanks, Jane.
Thanks, Jane.
Have a good weekend, bye.
Okay, bye. All right, um, thanks, Mimi, for arranging to have Jane present to us, that was very helpful. Again, we don't have necessarily an agenda this morning, we're just here to talk amongst ourselves. Does anybody want to raise their hand, jump into an issue?
I've got a couple of things that I wanted to chat with you all about. So two different things, one is the water talk that's that I've been working on, and I wanted to just kind of give you all an overview of that in a little more detail. Make sure I'm on target as far as what you're interested in hearing about. And then share with you some of the presenters that I've reached out to that have expressed interest in presenting to us. And then, and just making sure that, that this is something that you all think is important that we learn about and that I'm on the right track, so. So right now, I've got a, an outline developed with the goal to develop a common knowledge base for the commission around overall water use by oil and gas operation, how this ties into current state water planning, current water rights issues regarding fresh and produced water and oil and gas activities, research and findings around produced water and its potential for both oil and gas activities as well as for other beneficial uses, regulatory infrastructure and research gaps and barriers around produced water, and finally, current and emerging technologies. The speakers that I've contacted is Tracy Kozloff, who's the deputy state engineer for the Division of Water Resources, who perhaps could talk, give us an update on the report of water sources and demands for hydraulic fracturing of oil and gas wells in Colorado. I know we heard a brief update from Julie at the last meeting around this, but perhaps utilizing that to kind of set the stage as far as kind of overall freshwater use in oil and gas activities in Colorado. I've got Russell Sands, who's the section chief for the water supply planning, CWCB, to give us an overview of the state water plan as it pertains to oil and gas activities in Colorado. And then an overview of water rights as it pertains to produced water from oil and gas activities in Colorado, including opportunities and challenges for reuse. There was a suggestion, and I have not reached out to CDPE yet, and so I'm interested in feedback on this particular topic. But the topic would be water quality standards for use and reuse of produced water. And I didn't know if that's a good topic, if we should have CDPE or COGCC staff talk on that, or whether that's maybe something that we don't need in there, so I'll leave that as a question. I've got Shelley Chard, who's the director of the Water Quality Division for the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality. She was involved with a number of other professionals in the Groundwater Protection Council, and they produced a water report around regulations, current practices and research needs. It was a very in-depth analysis around produced water in a number of different bases, including the DJ Basin. And so had a number of people suggest that she would be an excellent speaker. I've got Nicole Saunders, who's the senior attorney for energy programs for the Environmental Defense Fund. And her topic would be risks and research needs for utilization of produced water outside of oil and gas activities. I've got Terra Energy Partners, oil and gas operator in the Peons Basin. The topic there would be current examples of use and reuse of produced water and gas operations, including successes, challenges and emerging technologies. And finally, I've got James Rosenbloom, who actually yesterday gave a great lunch and learn presentation. He's a research professor from the Colorado School of Mines, also the managing director of West, which is a water technology hub. And that topic would be current and emerging technologies around utilization of produced water. And so that's a lot, there's a number of people that are involved with this. Right now, it looks like the total time is about five and a half hours, including presentation and question time. And so I put that out there for- And so I put that out there for feedback. Is it too much? Am I, am I off topic? What are your thoughts on that?
I think there's a lot of good stuff there, John. And I can't think of anything at the moment that you've left out. And I guess I wouldn't feel anything would be too much, because I think any, you know, the more information is useful. If you think you can, you know, get everybody together and, and put it all together in a, in a couple of hours or a few hours or whatever that, to be able to provide.
Right now, right now, it's five and a half hours.
Okay, okay.
John, are you anticipating this would be a one-day affair? Or, and, or is everybody here to speak and listen to each other? Or are these one-offs where we hear from one person one day, one person another? What, what, what's your thought?
I think you go a number of different ways. I mean, I think if we wanted to dedicate a day, we could do this all in a day. It would be a lot for a day, but it would concentrate it into one discussion. We could certainly split it into two days fairly easily. I don't know if it would be really effective to do like individual speakers on multiple days, because a lot of these things do tie together. In fact, all the speakers inevitably tie together to one another in one form or another. And so I would think that a maximum of two days, unless we want to try to do a big brain dump all in one day. So I'm, I'm open to whatever you guys think on that one.
I think it sounds like a heck of a seminar. You know, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with kind of having a full day, so long as it's, as, as we plan for it, you know, with the appropriate breaks to, to make sure that, at least as one commissioner, that I can stay focused on the different topics along the way. But, you know, if we, if we can schedule at a time where we don't have a huge agenda that week, or if we need to add another day specifically for this topic, so we don't have to engage in some of the other regular matters on a, on a regular hearing, I'd support that as well. But I think I'm in favor of kind of one long day with appropriate breaks would be a good way of tackling it.
Yeah, I think I'm kind of in the same mind, and I think I, if we were to break it up at all, you know, one idea might be, I think, more of that water quality kind of piece in a separate presentation, and, and more of the, you know, specific sort of processes and regulatory entities and things like that in a, in, you know, in one chunk. And we could maybe even do a piece of it in this work session, if that works for, for folks. But, but yeah, I'm okay with putting it all in one day as well, as, as long as you give us a lunch break.
Jeff, any thoughts?
That's fine, yeah. As long as we have sufficient water breaks.
So let me reach out to everyone and see if I can schedule them all in one day. That's to be determined as well, so. You guys all right, that if it doesn't lie on a Wednesday or Friday, you have a special day?
Yeah, I'd almost rather it be a special day, John, frankly, as opposed to trying to tack it onto one of our, one of our weekly calendars. Those are starting to get full of other things. So, you know, shoot for a Tuesday or a Thursday or something.
Okay. And I was hoping Julie would be here, but I'll reach out to her, because I still am a little unsure about whether to tie in that CDPHE, COGCC, water quality standards presentation or overview, or whether that's too in the weeds for a broader topic like this, so.
Yeah, reach out to Julie, she was not able to make this morning. But, um, yeah, definitely do an individual reach out and figure that out.
And then the other piece that I wanted to chat about was just a general concept of a statewide listening tour over the course of a year to allow us to get to lots of different parts of the state and listen to local governments and community members and operators, and just see a lot of different things that would help inform us about operations and concerns and activities going on around the state, and help us better do our jobs by being able to see stuff on the ground. I've sketched out general concept, although it's been an incredibly rough draft concept stage, and I'm working with staff and other stakeholders to, and will continue to do that to start to build this out, and certainly want input from commissioners as this begins to get built out. And so anyone who's listening, as I start to talk about these things, if you've got thoughts or ideas, I'm certainly available by phone or email. If you've got suggestions on things that it's important for us to see, or places to go, or things to listen to. But right now, I've got it, you know, something around, some stuff around the Adams County area, kind of September, October 21. Northwest Colorado, and that'd be a one-day listening tour. We've got Northwest Colorado, four-day listening tour sometime around early November. Kind of a general Erie area tour for a one-day tour.
Jump in real quick. Is it quote a listening tour, or is it a evaluation tour? Where we are touring oil and gas impacted communities and like seeing things? As opposed to listening? Because I don't think it's, and maybe you're, you're using it on purpose, but I'm more interested in seeing impacted communities and what's on the ground. And, you know, yeah, there's part of that's going to be listening to folks as well, but it's, it's visually touring around and seeing things.
Correct. If you can suggest a better title, I'm open to it. I don't know what else to call it right now. We can just call it a tour.
A statewide tour of oil and gas impacted communities is really kind of what we're trying to understand.
Yep, yep, that's, that's correct. And so I apologize if it was not a good title. That's not was the intent. I mean, certainly it's to see lots of different things, you know, and to, you know, be on the ground in these places. And so I agree with that. So anyway, Erie area tour, one day sometime in January 2022. Greeley area tour, one day in February 2022. Eastern Plains tour, two-day tour, March of 22. Laramo County area tour. One-day tour, April, May 2022. And then a bigger South by Southwest tour, should be a four-day tour, June or July 2022, southwest part of the state, but then coming through the southern part of the state and tying in San Luis Valley and the Raton Basin. And so that's what I have sketched out right now. Certainly interested in feedback or thoughts, doesn't have to necessarily be today. And then I think some of these pieces can start to get built out.
And as we are in various areas, and we're looking at things, we could reach out to various, you know, operators also to see existing facilities, see reclamation project. We could reach out to Mike Hickey and our orphan well program and have him, you know, pick out orphan well. I think really, speaking to Mike Hickey, to Mike Leonard, to Jason and Adam, our field inspector leaders, those sorts of people can really give us a sense of things to see. Um, you know, they're, they are our eyes on the ground, so that would be really helpful.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, that would be my intent was to you know, have, visit, visit sites, meet with operators, community members, see things on the ground, try to get the full range of things that we often see on a daily basis, that we don't often get to be on the ground and experience, and so. So, yeah, I mean, all of those things, I'm trying to stay very, very high level right now.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure that that seemed like something that would be good to move forward on. And then I will work with staff to start to build these things out, and then keep the commission informed as we get pieces more locked in. Because I know that particularly on the longer days, the multi-day trips, that people are going to need plenty of leeway as far as knowing when these things are going to be, so we can sort out work schedules and child schedules and other things like that, so.
Have you broached these half a dozen areas that you're talking, thinking about with our staff at this point? Or was this developed on your own?
No, I've been working with Mimi and Megan and Mike Leonard and Greg Duranlow on, on like the stuff that's, that we're starting to consider through the fall. And then we'll continue to work with them. And then certainly interested in taking thoughts and inputs from other stakeholders as far as things that it's important for us to see, you know, as we begin to build this out through the rest of the year.
John, I think you and I maybe at one point talked about possibly looking at some of the, you know, key wildlife habitat that might be in some of these areas, if that's an option. And if I can help with that, just let me know.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. That's certainly a consideration as well. I mean, I've got a more detailed kind of sketch of some of this stuff that I've begun to work with, but I'm, right now, I want to keep it at a very high level. Yeah, so, but I have taken all the input that you all have given me as far as what you are interested in seeing, and have plugged it into the sketch, so.
John, I think that sounds like a great way to see the state. I'm, I'm personally very much looking forward to seeing parts of the state and operations, and areas of operations I haven't seen in my experience. So, so very much looking forward to that. And kind of, you know, seeing, hearing, feeling, understanding the, the kind of the firsthand interactions of, of, of oil and gas operations and the community in various parts of the state as well. So that being said, thank you very much for what you've done so far. And I look forward to, to seeing kind of the itinerary as it gets fleshed out.
Yeah, you're here. Thanks for all the work.
Thanks. That's all I got.
Great, thanks, John.
We could call it the Five Senses Tour. But yeah, thanks for, thanks for putting it all together.
Anything else, Priya Bill?
Nothing from me, Jeff, just getting ready for the hearing next week and, you know, continue to work through the, the filings that we've gotten from financial assurances. So I appreciate everyone's submittals on that.
And yeah, there's, it's a lot, so. Not enough time in the day, frankly, I'm with you. Okay, well then, let's, let's, unless there's something else, let's adjourn and get everybody back into their filings that I know we're all working through. Have a great rest of the day studying, and we'll see you next week.
Thanks, everybody.